Hello, I'm J. Jermaine Bay of Alodion Voice Pariah, Monté Carl Veron. The acronym is ANPAC, I'm Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 103, Class 103. What did we learn in Class 102? Well, we start to read over the preamble of Moroccan law, right? But what about Moroccan law? The empire of Morocco law, from the east coast to the west coast, right? What am I talking about? Right now, the competent Moorish states, provincial Moorish states, have established a convention, okay? And that convention is commonly known as the Convention in the Empire of Morocco, WRC Regional Council, alright? And in addition to that, we also have what? The Regional Supreme Court in the Empire of Morocco. So through the WRC Regional Council, commonly known as the WRC, we're starting to make history by reigning in the order of establishing a centralized intergovernmental organization that was established by organic Moroccan states. So for over 200 years, the Moors have been absent of their own Moorish governments. For over 1,000 years, we have been dependent upon who? Sultan's. In their dynasties, there was overseeing the Moorish empire. So now, it's the first time the Moors are coming back into governing themselves and governing their own land without a Sultan or a colonist controlling our land. This is the first time in over 200 years that Moors are sitting in the chairs of governance, nothing but Moors. Moors are the head of state, Moors are the legislators, Moors are the judicial branch. Moors, three branches of government. Moors can't even tell you the last time we had three branches of government amongst ourselves that we can recall or even read about. This is why Moors keep talking about 1492. Because in 1492, allegedly, that's when we failed, but that's not necessarily true. That was just one part of the empire. So if that's the case, if Moors think 1492 is when the Moorish empire failed, then that means that the WRC Regional Council, which is Moroccan law in the Empire of Morocco, is the first Moorish law that Moors have established on their own since 1492. I challenge any Moors to put on the record any Moorish laws that Moors through a three branches of government have established since 1492. So what Moors have to understand, this is a very, very humble beginning for all of us to begin to govern our own empire again since 1492. We must rise from where we failed. What failed? Governments, Moorish governments failed. But even in 1492, guess who was overseeing our governments? The Ottomans, the Arabs. They had intermixed with our governments. But now, in the year 2023, we're establishing law in the Empire of Morocco amongst Moors. This must be understood, Moors. We have to learn how to govern each other, the affairs of our empire together, the empire's the land. But we must also have courts. I challenge any Moors to tell me who says "United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me", then tell me, Moors, the name of the court and the name of the judge that does have judicial authority over you. Crickets. You see, what I've learned about the Moors, they want to talk government, but they don't want real governments because Moors, in my opinion, don't want to be governed. They want to be lawless. But guess what? That's a fantasy. Because everybody on planet Earth is governed by laws, and so show the Moors of the West. So if we failed in 1492, then now we have finally started to rise back up through what? Proper written instruments of law. What type of law? Moroccan law, not Moorish American law. No such thing as Moorish American law. So now, for the first time, we're coming back in the competency where all other civilized nations on planet Earth do, which is establish constitutions. After establishing constitutions at three branches of government, and through those three branches of government, they start to enact laws based upon their nationality. They got Moroccan laws, there's French laws, there's German laws, right? Egyptian laws, Ghana laws, Mexican laws. So for the first time in nearly 500 years, since 1492, we finally have Moroccan laws for Moors. You can't spell Morocco without M-O-R. More is more-rocket, more-rocket. Moorish for Moors. The land is Morocco, and the people are named after the land. We're Moroccans in Morocco. So this is the first time in over 200 years that we've had laws amongst ourselves. We will start to govern our affairs through what's called politics, diplomacy. We will learn to become diplomats and officials of a competent state. We will understand what privilege and immunity is all about. Nostril Ali wants to have a seat at the table amongst other men, other nations of the earth. Nations are states, not tribes. How are we ever going to have a seat at the table where not a state, only states can sit at the table of international law? So in order for us to get back into statehood, we got to reign in the order, stop being rogue Moors. So the first step was for all the Moroccan states to restore themselves in each of the territories, and through those Moroccan states, they have established an intergovernmental organization so that all the heads of state can sit at one round table and start to govern the affairs of the empire. But what has been the problem? Miseducation, indoctrination, subjugation, and incarceration. Why are we still in the status of subjugation and incarceration? It's because of the education and indoctrination. The education creates indoctrination that keeps you in the status of subjugation, and that subjugation leads to what? All because we didn't study international law. All the answers to the test have been there for a couple hundred years. We just didn't know. Why? Because of miseducation. And that miseducation created indoctrination of doing the wrong thing. And that wrong thing has led to what? Continued subjugation, and that subjugation has led us to incarceration. We've delayed our own justice. But now, I offer to you options. What options? You have to start choosing between the entire submission to the laws of the empire, and that starts with your own state government within your own territory, and then understanding how you can come together as the United States of Morocco Alliance through the WRC Regional Council. What has been the problem? Miseducation, listen to me. I have clean water, soil water. If you had an option of which one you would drink from, you're going to choose the clean water versus the soil water, the stagnant water, the dirty water. Now, that doesn't mean this water is sterile. It's just clean. You got to know the difference between clean and sterilized. It's just simply clean, but this is certainly dirty. But what's the problem? Moors didn't have a choice. Moors didn't know about what? International law. They didn't study international law. The only thing they've been handed is what? Municipal law of the United States. Res judicata, studying the revised statutes of Virginia, studying the revised statutes of South Carolina, studying the revised statutes of Philadelphia, studying the federal statutes, studying all kinds of stuff regarding trust law, UCCs, USC's. That's what this is, it's soil water. It's negative law versus positive law. What's positive law? Well-settled principles of international law is well-settled principles that can be proven over and over again. There's over 80 cases of Moors who have already decolonized, 80 territories on planet Earth of the United Nations since 1945 have helped to decolonize. That's well-settled principles. You can go back and study. Versus what? Moors keep studying what? Civil rights, NAACP. Saying you're Moorish American, ain't no such thing as Moorish American, saying you're Moorish American is negative law. It's a misnomer, it does not exist in treaties. You cannot enforce a contract unless you know the proper party name. If this is the proper party name, which is Moroccan, versus Moorish American, and you say, "Well, which one going to let me enforce the treaty?" I say, "Well, Moroccan law, Moroccan nationality." Which one is going to disallow me to enforce the treaty? Well, Moorish American. Well, you would choose this one, right? That makes sense. But guess what? Moors didn't have a choice. They, this was their only choice. They said Moorish American is where it is, right? Because this is what happened. Watch this, watch what I do, watch this. Watch, I'm going to switch it, right? I'm going to switch it, watch. I'm going to switch it. Moors said, "Oh, you ain't black, you Moorish American." But guess what? Black is a misnomer and negative law, and being Moorish American is a misnomer, a non-negative law. You gained absolutely nothing. You didn't get back to the well-settled principle. The well-settled principle is in your own treaties. But the problem is what? Set this down. You didn't have options. Now you have options, Moors. You have to choose between international law and internal municipal law of the United States of America, the United States, and there's several chartered colonial states. Because they're all charters. You got to choose international law and statehood versus tribal law. Ain't no such thing as tribal law. You got options, Moors, you got to choose between. You cannot conflate the two. There's two separate choices. You got to choose one. But the problem is you've never had options. ANPAC Study Session offers you options. You get free education, right? Or you can get, you can pay a fee, free fee. You got options. This is what Moors got to understand. Let's continue. As the Moors don't always open up the Constitution, you got to choose a constitution of Moroccan constitution. This is Moroccan constitution, it's clean water, well-settled principles of constitutional law on planet Earth. You got 55 territories in Africa, and all of them chose constitutions. 54 states in Africa have constitutions out of the 55. The 55th one doesn't. Which one is that? Israel, the only one that don't have a constitution. But all the rest of the African states have constitutions. What do Moors keep choosing? "Oh, you got to enforce the constitution of the United States of America." That's subjugation talk. You have chosen to delay your own justice because you're talking about you're going to enforce the constitution of the United States of America. What about enforcing your own constitution? That's the well-settled principle that all other territories on planet Earth have chosen to decolonize with a constitution. That's the well-settled principle, that's the clean water. It's clean water, it's constitution. Or you're going to keep enforcing the constitution of the United States of America. That's the dirty water. That's the stagnant water. It ain't going nowhere fast. That's what we got to learn about constitutions and well-settled principles of international law. As the Moors know, we still been going over Charter of the United Nations, still in Chapter 6, right? Article 33 was about the Pacific settlement of disputes. So today, we'll start learning more about how do you settle dispute as a standalone state? Or how do you settle dispute as what they call a class action lawsuit when all states come together, joint, joint states, right? The states come together jointly, okay? We'll talk about that today. We'll finally start to read the Declaration of Intervention today that the United States wrote on behalf of Ukraine when Ukraine was dealing with a human rights violation of genocide by the state of Russia, right? So we'll get into that today. As the Moors know, in Class 102, we was talking about the WRC Regional Council. The WRC Regional Council is the seal that represents who? The empire of Morocco. The empire of Morocco seal is right there. It's been ratified, it's probably been promulgated in accordance with international law, along with the convention. They're one and the same. It represents the thumbprint of the empire at this time through an intergovernmental organization. But what established the intergovernmental organization? Well, of these six states. These six states came together and agreed to establish a centralized intergovernmental organization to represent the central government of the empire. This is what we've been missing, Moors. So first, it starts off with your own individual state, and then six other states came together to establish the WRC Regional Council, alright? In addition to a court, there ain't no use in creating a convention that can't be enforced by a court. What type of court? Moorish court. Not no U.S. Supreme Court, Moorish court. Or Moors wearing pheasants. That must be understood. The court can help you, or it can prosecute you depending on your dispute. Are you the claimant, or are you the respondent? Are you the plaintiff, or are you the defendant? If you're the plaintiff, oh, you're going to love the Regional Supreme Court all of a sudden. If you didn't claim it, all of a sudden, you're going to love the Regional Supreme Court all of a sudden. However, you end up being defendant or respondent, all of a sudden now, you're like, "Aw, man, they tripping over there." See, Moors don't want to be governed. But guess what? Those days are over. Those days are over. Alright, so speaking of WRC Regional Council, you want to contact the WRC Regional Council, here's the contact information. But as you know, when you contact the WRC, what about the WRC? Well, knowledge is free at the WRC, and the word's going to get out eventually. You don't have to spend no money in order to learn about your own Moorish history and laws. Ain't no Cash App over here, ain't no Donation Tab, ain't no Contributions. There's free information for your liberty, right? Because why? It's because statehood is not for sale, that's why. You can't sell someone their nationality. That's your brother and sister. That's your uncle and auntie. That's your mom and dad. You don't charge your family. So you see, please contact the WRC for free. Facebook is WRC Council. Email is contact.thewrcc@gmail.com. And the YouTube channel is WRC Regional Council. The website is coming soon, right? So knowledge is free at the WRC. We will help you to get into statehood for free, right? Okay, Moors, here we go. We're going to finally start reading over the Declaration of Intervention that the United States of America and the United States International Organization wrote on behalf of Ukraine, right? So what happened? Okay, in this case right here, this is an international court of justice case. It was about allegations of genocide under the Convention on Prevention and Punishment of the crimes of genocide, Ukraine versus Russia Federation in the year 2022, right? Into Ollie, okay? So here's what Moors have to understand. The European states came together as a class action lawsuit, right? To support Ukraine. But what Moors have to remember is, look at all these states that kicked, so Ukraine, right? Ukraine, they were supporting Ukraine. Well, who was supporting Ukraine? Well, all the European states, quite a few of them, okay? And they wrote declarations of intervention, okay? So you got all these European states came together, okay? As a reminder, I know it's been a while since I went over this list, okay? So all these European states came together, alright? And they wrote a proper written instrument commonly known as a declaration of intervention in support of Ukraine. That way, all of them could come together as one party. So in a class action lawsuit, you go to court, you file a suit as one party, right? So you have approximately 42 states, right? Because you got Canada and Netherlands as a joint. So that would have been 40 with Canada, Netherlands would have been 41, right? 41 states came together to represent, or should I say, come together as a party for Ukraine, alright? But yet, Ukraine took Russia to the ICJ as a standalone state. But then the other European states, right? They said, "Okay, but we're going to support you, Ukraine. We're going to support you. We're going to support you, Ukraine. We're going to write a declaration intervention and create what's called a class action lawsuit through the Declaration of Intervention." That's how you become a class action lawsuit under ergo omnis parties. Well, what is ergo omnis parties? That means all these European states were supporting Ukraine, right? Supporting Ukraine and saying that Russia was trespassing, Russia was trespassing on Ukraine's sovereignty. That's trespass. Ergo omnis principles is notice to someone that you're trespassing. It's trespass, alright? So all these European states wrote declarations of intervention, alright? But keep in mind, Ukraine is the one who petitioned the court by themselves, okay? So take a look at the board. Alright, what's happening? Okay, so we got the Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 6, Article 33, Pacific Settlement of Disputes. That's what we're talking about right now. Ukraine had a dispute with who? Russia, right? Moors, what type of Moors? Moroccan Moors have a dispute with who? The United States of America. So we can learn a lot from this, so pay attention. Okay, so I have it on the board. Contracting states such as Ukraine, Ukraine is a contracting state, we're talking about this today. A contracting state can enforce international law contracts as an independent state or as joint states through a declaration of intervention, i.e. a class action lawsuit, right? So instead of saying class action lawsuit in international law, they say what? Declaration of Intervention. That allows several states, right? Several states, joint states, right? To come together under a legal nature, proper written instrument that's commonly known as a declaration of intervention. The declaration of intervention is what gives them the legal authority and rights to get involved with a dispute, okay? Alright, Moors, listen up. So as you know, when you slide down, okay? You come down, and the United States of America, right? The United States of America, that's what it says here, Declaration of Intervention of the United States of America. But wait, I thought they was the United States International Organization. We're going to talk about that today, the what's called legal personalities. Legal personalities. Legal personalities, that's what Moors got to understand. It's called legal personalities, okay? So right here is the actual 26 pages of the Declaration of Intervention that the United States International Organization wrote under the guise of the United States of America. Two separate legal personalities. We'll learn more about that today, okay? Okay, no, let's go ahead and take this from the top. We'll start the reading today.
International Court of Justice, Allegations of Genocide Under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation, Declaration of Intervention under Article 63 of the Statute submitted by the United States of America. On September 7th of 2022, Letter from the Charged DAFRS, DAFRS AI of the United States of America to the Kingdom of the Netherlands to the Registrar of the International Court of Justice on September 6th of 2022. I have the honor to attach a declaration by the government of the United States of America of its intervention pursuant to Article 63, Paragraph 2 of the Statute of the Court in the case concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation. I also attached an instrument signed by the U.S. Secretary of State appointing the agent of the United States for the purpose of these proceedings. I clarify that the signature on the declaration is that of the appointed agent, Richard C. Visick. Finally, I have the further honor to advise that the address for service to which all communications concerning these proceedings shall be sent is that of this embassy. Yours sincerely, Alicia Woodward, Charged DAFRS at Interim.
Okay, Moors, so what have we learned thus far? The United States is right now writing a proper written instrument to start to engage, to become a party to the suit between Ukraine and Russia. So they're writing a proper written instrument that gives the competent authority of the United States permission to go and represent Ukraine in this case. So this is what you do. You start writing, you pick up a pen and start giving people the authority to speak on behalf of your state. Now, we're going to talk about states in just a moment. Let's continue to read.
August 29th of 2022, the Honorable Philip Gautier, Register of the International Court of Justice, the Hague. Dear Mr. Gautier, for the purposes of intervention pursuant to Article 63 of the Statute of the Court in the case before the International Court of Justice, Allegations of Genocide Under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide, Ukraine versus Russian Federation, I hereby appoint Richard C. Visick, Acting Legal Advisor of the U.S. Department of State as Agent for the United States and Emily Kimball, Legal Counselor of the Embassy of the United States. and Emily Kimball, Legal Counselor of the Embassy of the United States of America as Deputy Agent. Please accept assurances of my highest consideration. Sincerely, Anthony J. Blinken, Secretary of State.
Okay, Moors. Pay attention. So, the Secretary of State, Anthony J. Blinken, right? Secretary of State, Capital West, got a Capital West on there, right? But wait a minute. Anthony J. Blinken is the representative of who? Listen to this paragraph, Moors. Point something out to you. For the purposes of intervention, right? Declaration of Intervention. Pursuant to Article Sixty-three of the Statute of the Court in the case before the International Court of Justice, allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide. Ukraine versus Russian Federation. I hereby appoint Richard C. Visick, Acting Legal Advisor of the U.S. dot, United States Department of State as Agent for the United States and Emily Kimball, Legal Counselor of the Embassy of the United States of America. But wait a minute. So, you got U.S. Department of State, you got United States, and then you got a totally different legal personality of the United States of America. So you got two legal personalities. You got United States, and then you got United States of America. Why is Anthony, Anthony Blinken writing like that? Why is he writing like that? Why didn't you say, United States of America, United States of America, United States of America? Why is he saying, United States is legal personality, then he switches up and says, United States of America as a legal personality? Why is he doing that? Whereas Moors already know the United States of America, right? The United States of America established and created the United States federal corporation, i.e. municipal corporation in the after Congress of eighteen seventy-one. Right? Then they turn around under what? Adjourned Senadia. They adjourned Senadia in eighteen seventy-one and closed the government of the United States of America. There is no government of the United States of America. There is no three branches of government of the United States of America. The United States of America is a name, existing name only. There's no government, no three branches of government. There is no president of the United States of America. There's no legislative branch of the United States of America. There's no judicial branch of the United States of America. It just exists in name only, like it's on, it's in a coma. It exists, but it's not active. So the United States of America in eighteen seventy-one, through its Congress at the time, created the United States in eighteen seventy-one as an international organization. That's commonly known as an intergovernmental organization. In international law, that's what it's known as. Locally, the United States says it's a federal corporation. But on an international level, it is an international organization and sometime referred to as an intergovernmental organization. But my question I'm gonna ask again is, well, since they did that eighteen seventy-one, why are they still talking about in the year twenty twenty-two that they're still referencing this name, United States of America? Why they still keep using it? If it's, if it's a shell of itself? That's the question. Okay, here's the answer. Here's one. So, through the Charter of the United Nations, because now the United States of America, or shall I say, the United States International Organization is invoking a contract known as the genocide contract. Listen. In order for them to talk about a contract, you must be a party to the contract. You can't enforce a contract if your name is not on the contract. So the first thing they have to do is invoke where they derive their authority in the contract. Well, the United States of America name is on what? In order to enforce international law through the Charter, through the Charter of the United Nations, okay? Now you go down to the signature page. And that's the signature page. See? That's the name that signed the contract. This is contract law. So in order for the United States International Organization to enforce a contract, they have to use the name that's on the contract, which is, United States of America. Because they trying to enforce the contract in the name of United States. Well, United States don't exist on the contract. The parties must be known. So in order for them to try to enforce, listen. This contract called the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide of the year nineteen forty-eight, it's a contract. Who be, whose name is on the contract commonly known as the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crime of Genocide? Whose name is on that contract? It's the United States of America. So Anthony Blinken has to use the name, United States of America in order to enforce the contract, because he understands contract law. The parties must be known. Where else do you see that party name? Okay? This is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That was signed and sealed by the Sultan in seventeen eighty-six. And then it was ratified and deposited and promulgated by the United States of America seventeen eighty-seven. The United States of America had to deposit the treaty back with the Sultan in seventeen eighty-seven. So in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, what's the party name on the treaty? United States of America in Congress. So the name on the treaties is what gives the United States of America its power to this very day, because it's just a name. Even though it's void of a government. What gives the Empire Morocco its power? Well, it still exists in name only, the Empire Morocco, but it was void of a government. The United States of America is void of a Congress. As a name, no three branches of government. The Empire Morocco was void of a government as well. Since when? Ever since officially nineteen sixty-two, when the Sultan demoted himself to be king of the Kingdom of Morocco through a constitution. He put in a proper written instrument that he's the king of the Kingdom of Morocco and is no more Sultan. So therefore, the empire was left in a status of adjournment. Senadia, without date. They never established another date to reconvene the Congress of the Empire of Morocco since nineteen sixty-two. So now, the year twenty twenty-three, guess what happened? Okay? These six states established an intergovernmental organization to represent a centralized government of the Empire Morocco. We haven't had a centralized government since nineteen sixty-two. And even then, in nineteen sixty-two, who was overseeing the centralized government? Arabs. Not Moors. It was the Arabs overseeing the Moors Empire as trustees and managers. So now, the year twenty twenty-three is the first time that Moors are sitting in the heads of state chairs. First time since nineteen sixty-two. Now, Moors are sitting at the legislators. Moors are sitting as executors. Moors are sitting in the judicial branch. And it's probably been since fourteen ninety-two that Moors sat in all three branches, if not longer than that, because the Arabs took over around the year eight hundred. A.D. If you go back and do the research, look up those Arab dynasties. They start, they start around eight hundred A.D. Eight hundred A.D., all the Arab Ottoman dynasties. So you see, Moors, it's been over a thousand years probably since Moors have sat in all three branches of government to represent the empire. Listen to my words. The empire. Let's get back to the United States. Listen. This is important, Moors. I'm taking my time here. So the United States of America put their name on a contract. Because that's the name where? How is the United States of America could sign the charter in that name? Okay, it's because of the treaty. This treaty is what's keeping the name commonly known as the United States of America alive. The life support. Listen to me. The life support system is the treaty, the bilateral treaty of peace and friendship of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six. And more specifically, eighteen thirty-six, because eighteen thirty-six, Article Twenty-five was changed, so now that's, that's the, it supersedes the seventeen eighty-seven treaty. The eighteen thirty-six treaty supersedes the seventeen eighty-seven treaty. But this treaty is the master contract. It's a master that started the treaty with the thirteen colonies. Okay? Keeping in mind, the Sultan of Morocco, Sidi Mohamed, recognized the thirteen colonies in December seventeen seventy-seven. The thirteen colonies proclaimed their Declaration of Independence seventeen seventy-six. The next following year, Sidi Mohamed recognized what? Their independence. Not their constitution, but just their declaration of independence. Seventeen seventy-seven. That's why they talk about seventeen seventy-seven all the time. Why they keep talking about seventeen seventy-seven? When they say, oh, well, that's when Betsy Ross, uh, sold this flag. Nah. It's because the Sultan of Morocco, the sovereign of the Empire Morocco, recognized the thirteen colonies and he allowed them to proclaim themselves as Americans. So therefore, they had an independence away from who? The British. They had independence away from who? Europe. And they had their own namesake called Americans. Who allowed them to be Americans? The sovereign, which is the Empire Morocco, in the office of Sultan, who was, which was Sidi Mohamed. Sidi Mohamed sat in an office. The office represents the empire. So in seventeen seventy-seven, they were recognized by their Declaration of Independence by the Sultan of the Empire Morocco. This must be understood. I'm giving you history lessons real quick before we move forward. And this right here, how can I say it? This is the umbilical cord. This is the umbilical cord that ties the United States of America as a name to the Empire Morocco as a name. They're tied to each other through a bilateral treaty that's still in force. That got renewed in eighteen thirty-six. They changed Article Twenty-five. But treaties, bilateral treaties are a, this is umbilical cord in order for the Americans to even exist as a name. Without the treaty and without their constitution, there are no Americans in Morocco. The American name of American is recognized by the Empire Morocco. It is a substantive name that's recognized in a treaty, so therefore it exists because it's in a treaty, a treaty supreme order land. The treaties recognize Americans to this very day. And Americans should be respected, because Moors keep saying they wanna enforce the treaty. Well, guess what the treaty says? It recognizes Americans, just like it recognizes Moors. So please stop with your ignorance and your arrogance, talking about there's no Americans. That means the treaty don't exist if there's no Americans. It's a bilateral treaty between Moroccans and Americans. You said Americans don't exist, that means the treaty don't exist. And Americans shall be respected, because Moors want the treaties to be respected. You can't have no cake and eat it too. Americans will be respected in Morocco. Just like Moroccans will be respected in Morocco by the Americans. It's an amity and commerce treaty. What does amity mean? Tranquility, peace. Then you can get into the money. If there's no peace, you can't have transaction with someone that you have beef with. You can't come back with someone that you have arguments with. Can't get back to Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Getting back to the letter. Now, what you have to understand is this. I'm, I'm, I'm taking my time for a reason, right here, Moors, because they're opening up. Before we keep reading, first you gotta understand what is contract law all about? Because they're writing this Declaration of Intervention only because of one reason. It's because the United States of America is a state in name only. A dependent, privileged state in the Empire Morocco. So as the United States of America is writing this letter, they're invoking this name, because that's how they can enforce treaties and they can enforce any contracts. I'm standing here for a minute. You gotta understand what I'm saying. Listen. I'm talking contracts. I'm talking United States of America. I'm talking Moroccans. I'm talking Ukrainians. I'm talking Russians. What do all those names represent? Nationalities and states. Okay? Listen. This is the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine, Article Two, okay? So I did a copy paste from the actual Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine. Copy pasted, put it to your word doc, okay? Because I wanna keep it germane to what I wanna talk about. Okay, no, but from the top, and then section A.
Uh, Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine, Article Two, Use of Terms. A. Treaty means an international organ, or international agreement concluded between states in written form and governed by international law, whether embodied in a single instrument or in two or more related instruments and whatever is particular designation.
Boss, okay. So according to the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, what, what does it mean on Law of Treaties? The rules.
Yeah.
The instructions. The standard operating procedures. How do you establish unity and conformity and accountability? It's rules of engagement. Between who? States. From the top. Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine. Vienna Convention on the Rules of Engagement between who? States. This is Article Two, Use of Terms. Section A. Treaty means an international agreement concluded between states in written form and governed by international law. So treaties are governed by international law, not by the Constitution of the United States of America or the Constitution of the United States. Moors need to stop talking about the Constitution of the United States. This is international law. We're governors laws. Okay, I'll read it again. If you wanna talk about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, listen, Moors. A. Treaty means an international agreement concluded between states in written form and governed by international law. So who can only be a party to a treaty? States. Morse are stateless, which means you can't enforce a contract because you're state, because you need a state in order to enforce a contract. And then once you establish the contract, which is the state, the state gotta have a right party name in it. And what's the proper party name that Morse should be using? Listen to me, because I'm still talking about the United States of America. Listen to me. So in a treaty of peace and friendship, that's what I have up here. Seventeen eighty-seven. Who the party? Well, it starts off early. It starts off right here. To all persons to whom these presents shall come or be made known. Whereas the United States of America in Congress, that's the first party, right? Now you scroll down. Scroll down. Scroll down, preamble, scroll down, preamble. Start right here. Pursuits thereof have arranged articles for a treaty of acting commerce between the United States of America, pardon me, and His Majesty, the Emperor of Morocco. So the treaty is between who? The treaty is between Morocco and the United States of America. Which articles written in Arabic language confirmed by His Said Majesty, the Emperor of Morocco. So the Emperor of Morocco confirmed the United States of America is a legal personality in court of treaty. It should be respected. Who else did the Emperor confirm? He confirmed that he is the Emperor of Morocco, not the Emperor of America. And seal with his royal seal being translated into the language of the said United States of America. So he transferred it to what? English. But what's the name of the party in contract? United States of America, once again. So so when we first started reading the treaty, it said United States of America. Now it says, United States of America again, right there. Say, United States of America again, right there. That's the name of the party of the treaty. This says, this is a treaty of peace and friendship. So the treaty of peace and friendship established between us, who's the us? Moroccans and the United States of America, which is confirmed. So the treaty is confirmed between who? Americans and who? Moroccans of Morocco. So Morse keep saying, we're the true Americans. Have the Morse even read the treaties? I keep telling them, Morse, put the books down. Morse don't know the difference between literature and legislation. This is legislation. Put your pamphlets and books down. That's literature. Go read the treaties. Treaty of Supreme Law of the Land. Start reading the Supreme Law of the Land, which is treaties. Because guess who's reading them every day? The United States of America. Guess who don't read them? Moorish Americans. Why? Because Moorish Americans think that they are the Americans, so they don't read the treaties. They took busy reading books and pamphlets. All types of literature and enforcing the Constitution of the United States of America, because Morse think they're what? Americans. This is ridiculous. Getting back to point. So the United States of America is contracting party on a contract. From this paragraph right here. This is a treaty of peace and friendship established between us, the Moroccans, and the United States of America, which is confirmed and which we have ordered to be written in this book and seal with our royal seal at our Court of Morocco. This ain't Court of Ameri- no. It's a Court of Morocco. This is why the International Court of Justice keeps telling Morse, you gotta enforce your Moroccan laws through the Consular Court, because this is where everything began. With a seal and a court and a government. Listen. So the treaty of peace and friendship was signed between who? Two. Between who? It was concluded between between two states. The United States of America, that's the proper proper name, and who? The Empire Morocco. And it was confirmed through the Sultan and who else? The court. The court must validate the state. Listen. Section E.
E. Negotiating state means a state which took part in the drawing up and adoption of the text of the treaty.
Pause. So section E. Negotiating state. Well, what's a negotiating state? Well, negotiating state means a state which took part in the drawing up and adoption of the text of the treaty. So whoever wrote the original contract is a negotiating state. That state, United States of America, was there when the treaty of peace and friendship was being drawn up and signed. There was a negotiating state. They negotiated the terms and conditions of the treaty. The United States of America is a negotiating treaty, I mean negotiating state when it comes to our treaties. They were always there, always. Section F.
F is a contracting state means a state which has consented to be bound by the treaty, whether or not the treaty has entered into force.
Okay, listen up, Morse. This is what Morse need to really focus in on right here, contracting state. F. Contracting state means a state which has consented to be bound by the treaty, whether or not the treaty has entered into force. So this contracting state is who? That will be any state that's trying to become a party to the treaty after the treaty was already signed by the negotiating state, okay? So the negotiating state wrote the treaty. And then the Moroccan states came in after the fact, years later, became contracting states, meaning the state signed the contract of the treaty of peace and friendship. So who are contracting states? Okay, let's go back up to it. These are contracting states. These six states, one, two, three, four, five, six, are all contracting states. Contracting states to what? The treaty of peace and friendship, right? They all contracting states to the treaty of peace and friendship because all six of the Moroccan states, provincial Moroccan states signed on and became a party to the contract after the fact. But the United States of America, the United States of America was there during the drafting of the contract, okay? So all the Morse have to become contracting states. You have to become a party to it. The question is, how do you do it? Well, now you must understand the instructions of international law. You must accede to the treaties through what's called an act of accession. How else do you become a party to the treaty? Now you gotta use your two branches of government. The legislative branch signs a bill that says the legislators recognize the treaty, the contract. Then the legislative branch passes the ratified bill over to the executive branch. So the head of state then can sign off and ratify it and agree to the terms, conditions of that contract as well. Then it's the president with the United Nations in according to Article one oh two of the Charter. And then the secretary of the United Nations puts it on a file. That's how you become party to the contract as a contracting state. Here's a contracting state. These are contracting states. Listen. Contracting contracting states to the treaty of peace and friendship, whereas the United States of America is a negotiating state because they helped to write. You got it? Okay?
I is international organization means an intergovernmental organization.
Okay, so in the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of nineteen sixty-nine, Article two, Use of Terms. Section I gives a definition of an international organization. Means an intergovernmental organization. So the United States of America in eighteen seventy-one established an intergovernmental organization known as what? Hold on. Known as what? Okay, let's go back to Antony Blinken's letter, known as what? United States. So the United States is an international organization, also known as an intergovernmental organization who acts as a representative, i.e. a power attorney, on behalf of who? United States of America, because the United States of America is the true name on the contract, but they have a representative called the United States intergovernmental organization. And this is why Antony Blinken is mentioning both legal personalities. Because this one, United States international organization or intergovernmental organization, represents the United States of America like a power attorney. Why? Because the United States of America don't have a government. That's why it can't represent itself, because there's no government officials of the United States of America. It's a shell. Just like the Empire Morocco was a shell ever since nineteen sixty-two. It became a shell of itself. Because the Sultan stepped down and become king. He left the seat of the empire void of a government. And in year twenty twenty-three, now through the six Moroccan states, I'm being redundant. The six Moroccan states have now opened the centralized government of the empire back open again through an intergovernmental organization coming onto Y zero Regional Council. Which is the convention. These are the bylaws, right? This is the convention, what I have up here. Convention in the Empire Morocco, the Y zero Regional Council, and it's one hundred and eleven articles, okay? That's the preamble. Then it goes right into chapter one, Article one. Okay? And it has one hundred eleven articles to start to write in the order of the empire. But who could establish, listen, who could establish these states? Only Moroccan Morse. Moorish Americans can establish states in Morocco. Why? Because Moorish Americans is not claiming to be Moroccans. They're claiming to be who? They say, what's your nationality? I'm Moorish American. Well, that's not a nationality. That's a non here. That's a misnomer. That name don't exist nowhere in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That I got on screen. It don't exist in twenty-five articles. But what does exist? The land is Morocco, and so therefore, the people are who? Moroccans. Don't that just make sense? But Morse are saying they're Americans. Is the land America? Yes or no? Well, the answer is no. So why the heck indigenous people keep saying they're Americans if the land ain't America? Come on, Morse, we gotta we gotta do better than this. This is common sense. Getting back to point. So the United States is an international organization, which means an intergovernmental organization. So the United States intergovernmental organization can start to get into communication with the WRC, because the WRC also represents what? It represents a convention, right? It is a convention, which is an intergovernmental organization in itself. So it's an intergovernmental organization that represents the centralized government of the empire that get in communication with the United States. The United States intergovernmental organization represents who? The United States of America. So the Y zero Regional Council represents the United States of Morocco. We're gonna talk about that. Be patient with me. This is the Montevideo Convention on Rights and Duties of States of nineteen thirty-three. Article one. Why are we reading this? Because once again, this is the rules of engagement. You you no longer want to be subjugated? Then you need a state. They set up the rules. No?
Montevideo Convention on Rights and Duties of States of nineteen ninety-three, I'm sorry, nineteen thirty-three. Article one, the state as a person of international law should possess the following qualifications. A, a permanent population. B, a defined territory. C, a government. And D, capacity to enter into relations with other states.
Okay, Morse. Why are we reading this? Because these are instructions, standard operating procedures. Right? Listen. Article one of the Montevideo Convention on Rights and Duties of States of nineteen thirty-three. Article one, the state as a person, so the state is a person in international law. You didn't Morse say states can't be persons? Well, a state is a person. It's a legal personality that's recognized as being an artificial person. That way, states can do business with states. But where do you think they got this concept from? They got it from your treaty. Listen. Take it from the top. Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven. No, can't you read this right here?
To all persons to whom these presents shall come or be made known.
Listen. To all persons whom these presents shall come or be made known. So who's the person that's present? The United States of America. That's the person. Who else is the person? Persons is plural. See, see, persons is plural. See? Persons is plural. Who's the persons? Who's the other persons? Okay, you got the United States of America. Who's the other person? Okay. Who's the other person? It is Morocco. Morocco. The Empire of Morocco is the other person in international law. Treaties are governed by what? International law. So in international law, a person is the state. Read it again. Morse Morse got it. Morse, we gotta study. To all treaty of peace and friendship. This is your Morse treaty, where they got this language from. For the Montevideo Treaty of nineteen thirty-three. Right here, the preamble, to all persons. Who are persons? The United States of America is one person and the Empire Morocco is the other person. Empire Morocco is the other person. Empire Morocco is the other person. This is why they always capitalize the E. The empire is always with a capital E. Why is it with a capital E? Because it's recognized as a proper noun. It's a person, place, or a thing. It's not a lowercase e, even though lowercase e would still be considered a noun. That's like saying that boy's name is John. Well, boy is a noun, but it's a lowercase b. You spell John with what? Capital J. That's called a proper noun. So the proper noun is John. The common noun is boy. So every time you see empire, where the capital E is recognized in what? It's the proper noun of the party. Then you got a capital M, Morocco. Then you got a capital M, Morocco. Proper nouns. What are nouns? Person, place, or thing. Listen. We're talking contracts. We're talking contracts. So, in the Treaty of Montevideo, article one says the state as a person. That came from your treaty. That's how it came up with the concept that states are persons. Because only treaties can be signed between who? States. That's the person. Getting back to the letter. I can't go no further. I gotta break this down, Moors. So, you read the letter that Antony Blinken wrote. He's invoking the person, the United States of America in his letter. He's writing on behalf of the Declaration Intervention on behalf of Ukraine. He, Antony Blinken is invoking who? The person whose name is on the treaties and whose name is on the Charter of the United Nations and whose name is on the contract commonly known as the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide. I got a question for the Moors. How are you gonna enforce genocide against the United States or the United States of America when you ain't got no state? Because only a state can become a contracting party or a contracting state to the contract commonly known as the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crime of Genocide. How is we gonna enforce genocide with states? This is the misconceptions, miseducation that's kept us in the status of subjugation and on a path to what? Incarceration. This stuff is too easy. Listen. Still talking about Antony Blinken? The United States of America, we're talking contracts, but I gotta break this down before I go any further. So, now we know the state as a person in international law, so international law recognizes states as persons because international law started with your treaties as Moors. And Moors in your treaty that was confirmed by the Sultan and confirmed by the Moroccan court said that what? Persons is what? States. Stop talking about states ain't persons, Moors. You sound ignorant. You don't know what you're talking about. Study the treaties and put down the dang on books. Listen. I got some questions for the Moors. No?
Question, what legal personality can become a party to a treaty? A, answer, only a state can become parties to a treaty.
Mm-hmm.
Question, is a tribe a state? The answer, no. A tribe is not a state. Tribes cannot become parties to treaties.
No. When we look at the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, did it say anything about tribes?
No.
It says states are parties to a treaty. Only states can enforce treaties. Not tribes. Listen.
Question, is tribal law inferior to constitutional state law? Answer is yes, but tribal law is private law. Reservations are dependent states. Reference, see the United States Supreme Court case McGirt versus Oklahoma of twenty twenty.
Okay, so what's up with this question? And all these questions? Let's take it from the top. Question. What legal personality can become a party to a treaty? Answer, only a state can become party to a treaty. We just learned that. Another question. Is a tribe a state? Answer, no. A tribe is not a state. Tribes cannot become parties to treaties. Only states can become party to a treaty. Question. Is tribal law inferior to constitutional state law? Answer, yes. Tribal law is private law. Reservations are dependent states. Now, what's up with this answer? Why am I talking about tribes? Because right now, you got Moorish Americans and black people out there talking about they're Indians and it's about tribal law. International law does not recognize tribes. International law only recognizes states. That's standard, standard operating procedure. That's well-settled principle. Listen. Only states can be parties to treaties. Not tribes. Only Moroccan Moors can be parties to a treaty. Not Moorish Americans. Only Moroccan Moors can enforce constitutional treaties. Not black people. You gotta choose between positive law and negative law. You gotta choose between education and miseducation. You got Moors and black people out there talking about we can enforce tribal law. Well, show me the well-settled principle that says this dirty water, this soil water, this unproven theory that tribal law is supreme over international law. Show me where this municipal law, tribal law, is supreme to international law or Moroccan law. You gonna say tribal law is more supreme than Moroccan law? Prove it. Show me the well-settled principle of international court of justice cases that prove that tribal law was above Moroccan law. Show me that tribal law is supreme than Moroccan law. Prove it. Show me international court of justice cases. Show me U.S. Supreme Court that said that tribal law is above the United States law. Tribal law is not above the United States Department of Justice. Go look up the case. Go look up the case of U.S., U.S. Supreme Court case McGirt versus Oklahoma twenty twenty twenty. I mean, twenty twenty. Listen. You will learn if U.S. Supreme Court said that treaty Supreme law the land. Not tribal law. So, look at this answer I put right here. Reservations are dependent states. What does that mean? Because Native Americans and people that keep saying they're Indians, I guess you're trying to migrate back to a reservation, I'm assuming. So, you say it's about tribal law, only reservations have tribal law. But guess what? Reservations Indians are dependent upon the United States of America. Indian reservations are subordinate and inferior to the Department of Justice. So, when Moors keep saying it's about tribal law, that's a dang on lie. It's again, once again, miseducation, indoctrination that's gonna keep you in the status of subjugation and eventually incarceration. Listen. No?
Tribal law means turn around and cuff up.
Uh-huh. The Moors jump out there. Black people jump out there. Talking about you got tribal law rights. Guess what's gonna happen? Here's what's gonna happen. Somebody gonna tell you, when you jump out and say it's about tribal law, you know what that means? It means turn around and cuff up. That's what it's gonna result to. This is what it's gonna result to. Listen. No?
You have the right to remain silent. Anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. You have the right to an attorney. If you cannot afford an attorney, you will be provided, one will be provided for you. Do you understand the rights I have just read to you? Sincerely, the Charter State of Whoever.
Mm-hmm. This is what you're gonna hear when you jump out there talking about you a Moorish American or you jump out there talking about it's about tribal law. You jump out there talking about I'm indigenous. This is, next words you're gonna hear.
Miranda rights.
Miranda rights. Let me read them again, because this is what you're gonna hear when you talking about you got tribal laws, which is misconception, it's not well-settled principles. I challenge any Moors out there to show me where tribal law trumps international law. Show me the well-settled principle of any court on planet Earth that says tribal law trumps Moroccan law. Show it to me. Show me where the U.S. Supreme Court says tribal law even trumps their laws of the United States. It don't exist. It don't exist nowhere on planet Earth. Africa has fifty-four states and none of them call themselves tribes. Ghana don't call itself a tribe. Egypt don't call itself a tribe. Libya don't call itself a tribe. South Sudan don't call itself a tribe. Where the heck is Moors getting these misconceptions? It's about tribal law. This is foolishness. This has to stop. Our people got pain. We ain't got time for no games. Prove it if you got proof that tribal law is superior to anything else on planet Earth. Prove it. Stop talking about it. Prove it. Can I improve international court of justice laws? Talking about France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two that talked about Moroccan law being superior in Morocco. I can talk about the Treaties of Peace and Friendship, talk about Moroccan law. Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty is about Moroccan law, rights of protection. Where? In Morocco. Ain't got nothing to do with tribal, nothing. None of the treaties talk about anything representing tribes or tribal law. Where are Moors getting these misconceptions? This is ridiculous. We've been hoodwinked. We've been led astray by our own people. And this has gotta stop. Now, I'm gonna say it again. You jump out there talking about you got tribal law rights. You know what tribal law means? Turn around and cuff up. And this is what you're gonna hear next. You have a right to remain silent. Anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. You have a right to an attorney. If you cannot afford an attorney, one will be provided for you. Do you understand the rights I have just read to you sincerely, Charter State of? That's what you're gonna hear when you talk about tribal law. That's what you're gonna hear when you talk about Moorish American principles and you standing on your square. This is what Moors keep hearing. And we keep repeating the same thing over and over and over again, expecting a different result. Now, here comes somebody new talking about some tribal law. This don't make no sense. Tribal law and Moorish American standing on your square is the same thing. It's synonymous. You going to jail. That's all it is. I'm being honest with the Moors, because I love the Moors, I love all the Moors, and I'm tired of us being hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray by our own people. It's embarrassing. Why are we doing this to ourselves? When all we gotta do is go back and read simple contracts of well-settled principles.
The Art of Geopolitical War. W A R is an acronym, Words and Reference Points. Strategy and tactics are how victory is, is evolved. Strategy without tactics is the slowest route to victory. Tactics without strategy is the noise before defeat.
Anybody know anything about studying the art of war? The word war is an acronym for Words and Reference Points. You gotta back up your words with reference points. Documentary evidence of well-settled principles. You standing there rambling all day, ain't got no reference points. You need well-settled principles of reference points so people can see a clear understanding of the critical path to victory. You must have a strategy and then put it into action. But instead, Moors out there just rambling for two and three hours, ain't showing you no reference points, and you sitting there listening to that BS. What is wrong with us as a people? International law provides instructions on how to decolonize. We gotta choose between, Moors. We got options now. Please, study your options. Listen. No?
To know your opponent means you must become your opponent. The Moors' opponent is a state. The opponent is the United States of America. The United States is a negotiating state. The United States of America, the Moors must become a state.
All right? So, listen. To know your opponent means you must become your opponent. When you play your opponent, you must know your strengths and weaknesses. You must understand your opponent's strengths and weaknesses. You must study yourself and study your opponent. This is what people do. It's called matchups. You must match up and figure out whether you have an advantage or disadvantage. How do you get into a, a, a match, a one-on-one with someone? You must study them. Listen. Says, to know your opponent means you must become your opponent. You must think like them. You must anticipate their moves. You gotta study them. The Moors' opponent is a state. That's our opponent. The opponent is the United States of America. That's the opponent. We must study the opponent. Listen. The United States is a negotiating state. The United States of America is a contracting state. That's what I meant to write there, contracting state. So, the United States is a negotiating state and the United States is a contracting state because they signed on to other contracts after the fact. Okay? Then right here, it says the Moors must become a state. How are you gonna fight the United States of America? How you gonna fight the United States of America when you don't have no state? I'll read again. To know your opponent means you must become your opponent. So, what is our opponent? A state. According to what? The treaties. So, where's our state? It's Moors. How are you gonna compete with states when you're stateless? That means you don't understand yourself, because you don't realize that you're stateless, which means you don't understand your opponent. How can you defeat your opponent? If you don't even understand yourself. You've already failed in combat, because you don't know your own strengths and weaknesses, which means you haven't studied your opponent, who's a state. No, but Dr. Ali said study, study, study. And when you think you have studied, well, I would ask you, what does, you asking what the study meant? You said what? Study yourself. So, you need to be studying yourself to realize you need an estate in order to compete with the United States of America. Okay, but what about, once you understand you have a state? Okay, what's next? Now, you have to understand the art of war. The art of what? Geopolitics. Geopolitical, what is geopolitical? Geo stands for what? Geographical, right? What's political? That's the state. So, geopolitics or geopolitical means understanding the latitude longitude of the local politics of that particular state. Moors don't understand what geopolitics is. Geo is what? Morocco. But Moors keep saying it's America. You don't even study geographical location. You don't even understand politics, because politics is about states. So, Moors are failing at this one simple term, geopolitics, because you don't understand it's Morocco and you need a Moroccan state in order to compete with the other opponent who's an actual state. When Noor Dwi Ali said to study, 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 who did he tell us to go study? He said study the European. What about the European? Oh, okay. The European is about what? European is a negotiating state. The Europeans are contracting states. The Europeans have constitutions, flags, seals, they enact legislation. They have courts. They get into relations with other states. This is too easy. What do Moors say? Oh, enforce the constitution. That means your statelessness is subjugated. You've been miseducated. That's why you remain subjugated. And this is why you find yourself incarcerated. This is too easy. Because you don't even know who the parties are. You saying you're the American. You've already lost. You're self-defeated. But yet, the United States knows who they are. The United States knows who they are. The United States knows who they are. The United States said we're both legal personalities. We're the United States and we're the United States of America. They got to audacity put in the letter, because they understand contract law. Moors run around here writing written affidés saying they're Moors run around here writing written affidés saying they're Moorish-American. You don't understand contract law, but you keep saying the colonists is criminals. No, the colonists looking at you saying, "We don't know who you are. You're an alien. Ain't no such thing as Moorish-Americans in the treaty." You're invisible to them. Listen. So now that the Wazirs, the Wazir Regional Council has established a centralized intergovernmental organization to govern over the affairs of the empire. Now we can get into political discussions with all the states on planet Earth. Because these states, even as an individual state, can start to talk to other states. These states started talking to each other. These six states got into state relations. Okay, let's go back. Montesque Treaty. Montesque Treaty. We're following instructions, Moors. We're following instructions. This is too easy. What was Section D? D, capacity to enter into relations with other states. Okay, what did WRC do? They got into relations with other states. Other Moroccan states came together. We're following instructions. Listen. We're still talking about the United States of America. What's happening, Moors? Listen. What I have up here is a slide, PowerPoint slide. I got three slides for you. Just let the Moors know. I'm gonna give you a basic illustration visual of what's happening right now. Because we're talking about the United States of America and we're talking about the United States of Morocco. Because you must understand, you must become your opponent. You must know your opponent. And what about our opponent? They are what? United States of America, which means we have to mirror image and become what? The United States of Morocco. Is that easy? Listen. Okay, so what happened, Moors? What happened with the United States of America? Okay. The United States of America in seventeen eighty-nine, right? That's when they deposited their constitution with Sidi Mohamed in seventeen eighty-nine. Right? So they first drafted the constitution in seventeen eighty-seven. Then they concluded seventeen eighty-eight. And they did not have full powers. It wasn't recognized until who recognized it first? Sidi Mohamed of the Empire Morocco. Or else their constitution was their private law. Instead of public law, they had to depolite their constitution with who? The sovereign. So the United States of America seventeen eighty-nine constitution made the what? A negotiating state or contracting state. Because a state is a person. They can be parties to a treaty. Right? Now I got a dropdown here that says what next? So the United States of America created the United States Intergovernmental Organization in eighteen seventy-one. And after that, it established charters coming on as example. Colorado, Oregon, Georgia, Indiana, Michigan, and Texas. These are all charters. These are all charters, right? These are all charters. Colorado's a charter. Oregon is a charter. Georgia's a charter. Indiana's a charter. Michigan's a charter. Texas is a charter. Why? Because they were all established by who? The United States Intergovernmental Organization. An organization cannot create states. An organization can only create charters. Only a state, the United States of America, could create an organization. Only the United States of America, which was the state that Sidi Mohamed recognized. So the United States of America created the United States Intergovernmental Organization. So the United States of America created an organization. And then that organization created charters. But charters cannot create states. So all the fifty so-called Union States are not states. They're what? Charters. Okay, so who's the real party on the contract of treaty of peace and friendship or the United Nations Charter? It is who? The United States of America. But the United States Intergovernmental Organization represents the United States of America as a power attorney, a trustee, or manager. And through this organization, it created charters. What's happening? Listen. Empire Morocco, now we're talking about the Empire Morocco. That's the other party to what? The treaty. Talking party names. So the Empire Morocco is what? A negotiating state. The empire's the negotiating state to the treaty. And it's the sovereign. Listen. Empire Morocco is the sovereign land of each provincial Moroccan state. So each provincial Moroccan state, right now, these six states are representing the Empire Morocco as provincial state. What's provincial mean? That means these states recognize the empire, the land is actually the Empire Morocco. And each one of these Moroccan states is part and parcel to the Empire Morocco. So the negotiating state is the Empire Morocco, and these six states right here are contracting states to the Empire Morocco. And they became parties to the treaties as a contracting state. And now they can enforce treaties. So now that these states came together, these six states were independent states, separate from each other. And they said, "Okay, well, how do we come together to put our efforts together?" They said, "Okay, that's established." So what did these six states do? They created an intergovernmental organization known as the Wazir Regional Council Convention, and that's the seal that represents the intergovernmental organization. This seal represents the centralized government on behalf of all the six Moroccan states, as well as the other, and I showed you that minute, well, the other territories from the east coast to the west coast that have yet to restore a constitution to claim the land. Let's say Alabama. The state of Alabama is still a non-self-governing territory that hasn't been reclaimed by a Moroccan state yet. Okay, but the Wazir Regional Council Convention can still provide some limited protections even for the state of Alabama for those Moors there. We'll talk about that another day. Okay? But what else? Listen to me. I'm gonna make sense of this for you. So the United States of Morocco, these six states came together to create the Wazir Regional Council in order for them to start to decolonize through self-determination in the Empire Morocco. But the United States of America, the name on the contract, established the United States International Organization that established these charters, one, two, three, four, five, six. And you got what? Another forty, forty-four more, right? Out of fifty territories, right? So Moors, we need, we need to fill this up and have fifty-plus Moroccan states, right? But as example, got six on six, these are verses. So right now, these six states, through a succession, have restored their territory. For example, Ampac has restored a Moroccan state. And the latitude longitude, the geopolitical territory commonly known as the state of Colorado is now a Lordy of Moors' prayer of ante Colorado. So all these six states did the same thing. They had a Declaration of Independence, then they established the Constitution, right? And they departed all that to the United Nations in order to declare sovereignty in Morocco as a state. And now, because they did that, here the equivalent colonial charter states that we took over these territories under Uti Posiditis Juris principles. Right? So we decolonized these particular territories of Colorado, Oregon, Georgia, Indiana, Michigan, and Texas as an example. So what are we doing now? Now we're playing political chess. Listen to me. We're playing political chess with the United States of Morocco versus the United States of America. You must understand your opponent. You must become like your opponent. Your opponent is a state. You must be a state. If your opponent is playing as the United States, then you must be combative as the United States as well. So the United States versus the United States, so the United States of Morocco versus the United States of America. You see what's happening? So now it's a Moroccan seal versus American seal. This is geopolitics. And what is, what is the objective? What's the objective? Because everything must have a result. What are we trying to do? We're trying to do what? Here's the strategy and the tactics. It's due to what? It's decolonization and self-determination in the Empire Morocco versus what the United States is trying to maintain is what? Colonization and naturalization in the Empire Morocco. So they want to maintain this. We want to maintain this. We want to be, we want to establish decolonization and self-determination in the empire. They want to maintain colonization and naturalization in the empire. That's the game. And you can never beat them if you're not the United States of Morocco versus who? The United States of America. Listen to me. So now that I think about it, does that say the United States are tribes? Listen to me, Moors. Our ignorance is bliss. Look what I have here. Look at this chess board. It's a chess board. Look at the setup. The setup has checkers. Checkers, okay? Checkers. Checkers. Right? Checkers versus chess. Okay? Checkers versus chess pieces. What do these checkers represent? Okay, these checkers represent, right here, I got checkers on here trying to align themselves to go into combat with chess pieces. This is what you call incompetency, that someone doesn't understand the rules of engagement of this particular game. Because you think che- checkers are supposed to compete with chess pieces. And guess who's been doing that the whole time? Listen to me. Moors have been going about this in individual processes as one standalone checker against the United States of America who's playing chess and Moors are playing checkers. You don't even know who you are. You saying you're a Moorish-American when you should be saying you are a Moroccan national because you got Moroccan nationals versus American nationals. But instead, you're saying you're a Moorish-American that don't exist in the game of political chess. What else are you doing? Then you turn around and insult the injury. Now, Moors, I'm seeing them on the so-called educational platforms talking about, it's about tribal law. So you're gonna put tribal law that represents these checker pieces, you got tribal law set up to compete with the United States of America. So the United States of America, the black pieces, you going up against them with tribal law, and the United States of America got state law through the United States of America. Moors don't understand the engagement of this game. So what needs to happen? We need to study international law to understand. You must mirror image your opponent. So what we need to do? Look at this. Moorish-American, standing on your square as a checker versus a chess political game, it's gotta stop. You talking about tribal law versus international law, it's gotta stop. So you know what you need to do to your brain? This is what you need to do. Get rid of all that. You wasting your time. You're gonna lose every time because you don't understand the rules of engagement. Guess who? Who are we supposed to be, Moors? We're supposed to set up what? Over a period of time, we're supposed to set up chess pieces. We're supposed to be setting up states. We're supposed to be a mirror image of the United States of America to start defeating them in a geopolitical game of chess. This game is about constitutions and statehood. This game about international law recognizes state-on-state disputes. Now you're set up to engage in the game. And the whole time, we've been playing with checkers against states. We've been doing individual processes versus establishing states. Now, here's the good news. We've established states as Moroccan states with the proper Moroccan nationality. And we've come together as the United States of Morocco versus the United States of America, the black pieces. We're the white pieces. Why do I say the Moors are white pieces? It's because we get to open up first. Why do we get to open up first? It's because we're the sovereign. But what actually is the sovereign? It is the constitution. It's the state. Not the individual Moors. The state extends sovereignty to the Moors. Without the state, you're stateless. You have no sovereignty. You're just a Moors subject that's been naturalized in the United States of America, and that's the game that's happening. Listen to me. What is this game right here about? Listen. Listen. What is the contentious dispute? I said it again. What is the contentious dispute? The United States wants to maintain a status, the status of what? Want Moors in status of what? Colonization and naturalization in the Empire Morocco. What do Moors want? Moors want decolonization and self-determination in the Empire Morocco. Does this sound familiar to you? You have to choose between. Choose between. Listen. Listen. This is the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. The name of this Madrid Convention is what? What is the purpose and objective of this treaty? It says what? "Right of Protection in Morocco, July third, eighteen eighty." I'm gonna read it again and make my point. Listen. What is the objective and principle of this convention? It's about the right of protection in Morocco. The question is, who's got the right to provide protections in Morocco? What they're gonna tell you in Article fifteen between these two paragraphs. These, this Article fifteen broke into two paragraphs, Clause one, Clause two. Look how many times it mentioned the word "naturalize." Naturalize, naturalization, naturalization, naturalization. So, listen to me. This is the geopolitical game that's happening. Listen. So if I go back to my PowerPoint. Right? If I go to my PowerPoint, what's the game that's happening right now? This is paragraph one of the Madrid Convention, Article fifteen, paragraph one. This over here is Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph two. So paragraph two, the United States of America want to keep what's an unnaturalized status. That's the game for them. Paragraph number one, the Moors are fighting to decolonize and no longer be naturalized. They want a self-determination in the empire. This is the political chess game that's happening right now. Listen. Take a snapshot of that. Listen. Keep that in mind. Paragraph one, Clause one, Clause two. This is political chess game. The United States of America wants to keep Moors right here in the second paragraph. If the Moors understand international law and statehood, you immediately get to invoke paragraph one. So it's paragraph one versus paragraph two. The whole game, Moors, is about Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid, paragraphs one and two. That's the whole geopolitical chess game. If you learn how to be a grand master of clause one versus clause two, you'll win the geopolitical chess game. Let's read clause one. Nova.
Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization is a foreign, in a foreign country, was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco.
Clause, so clause one, paragraph one, is about how can Moors provide protection? How do Moors get a right of protection in Morocco to protect themselves? Well, you gotta return to Moroccan government. So you gotta return to Moroccan government. Or what's gonna happen in paragraph two that talks about right of protection in Morocco? Cause see, the United States of America and the United States International Organization wants to maintain a right of protection in Morocco over naturalized Moors, which is paragraph two. Nova.
Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction.
So paragraph two is the United States of America civil and criminal jurisdiction over naturalized Moors without any restriction. So what political geographical or geopolitical game is the United States of America and the United States Intergovernmental Organization playing? What game are they playing for? They playing for what? A game of naturalize, naturalization, naturalization, naturalization without any restrictions. They wanna keep Moors naturalized. That's the game for them. But when Moors enforce paragraph one, clause one, now you do what? You decolonize, which means you do what? You're no longer naturalized. So now you're beating, you're defeating the United States of America and the United States International Organization at this geopolitical game of chess. But how the hell, how the heck will you gonna beat them if you playing with checkers and checkers as being a Marsh American? How the heck you was gonna beat the United States of America with tribal laws? That ain't a state. Marsh America's not a nationality, which means you can't establish a state that says you're a Marsh American cause that's what you call identity theft. You can't claim to be somebody that you are not. And you certainly can't enforce it with tribal laws. This is shameful what we've done. We've delayed our own justice because we don't understand this geopolitical chess between Articles one and Articles two. The whole game is right here, you're looking at it. And the United States of America is winning on a paragraph two. You see how short paragraph two is compared to paragraph one? So what's happening, Moors? Listen to me. You need a declaration of intervention. The first declaration of intervention was your constitution. That was the first declaration of intervention to intervene between you being what? Naturalized and not naturalized. That constitution immediately set forth an opportunity for you to come back to paragraph one. Without the constitution, you stealing paragraph two, which means the United States of America and the United States Intergovernmental Organization is beating you with the black pieces. And you sitting there playing with checker pieces, they got chess pieces. You don't even know the rules of engagement, and they're winning and keeping you naturalized. So you needed a declaration of intervention, commonly known as your constitution, to come in and enforce paragraph one of the right of protections in Morocco. Your constitution gives you the right of protections in Morocco, not in America. Without the constitution, the United States keeps you in a naturalized status without any restrictions. They're beating you at the geopolitical game of chess cause you playing with checker pieces. Cause you don't know what the heck you talking about. Moors. Each stage, this is three stages, one, two, three. The first stage is, we had to organize. First, we had to establish constitutions as an independent state. Then we have to come together as the United States of Morocco Alliance and establish a centralized government to represent the empire so we can enforce Article one of the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty. Because Article one is about decolonization and self-determination in the empire of Morocco through states. Okay, listen. How are we ever gonna establish and restore the United States of Morocco or the empire of Morocco without the United States of Morocco? You can't claim from the, from the west coast to the east coast or the east coast to the west coast to turn around and say, oh, one Moor gonna claim all this cause I'm the Sultan. Oh, I'm the emperor. I'm the king. I'm the empress. I'm the duke. You got all these ridiculous self-appointed titles. You can only claim under Uti Posaditis juris, you can only claim one territory at a time. It's a puzzle. Listen to me. This is the front of the box of a puzzle. The front of the box of a puzzle always looks whole. What is this called? Mission and vision. But then you open the puzzle up, it's all in pieces, right? It's all in pieces. So imagine this is all broke up in pieces, all these territories broke up in pieces cause that's what's happened to the empire of Morocco. It's been fractionalized, right? All the Moroccan states have been displaced. Now we gotta bring it together back like a puzzle. And the only way to bring it back, we have to now what? Decolonize each of the territories at a time. That way you can have what? You can have a right of protection in Morocco. Against who? The United States of America. The United States of America's not holding us back. We holding ourselves back. And don't get me wrong, do they wanna play political chess? Absolutely. I'm not mad at them. You know how hard they done fought to subjugate us? You think they just gonna lay down? At the very least, they wanna engage in what's called a geopolitical war. What is war? Words and reference points. They wanna see if we know how to use a pen. This political game right here is about a pen. Do you know how to write a constitution? Do you understand declaration of intervention? Do you understand full powers? That way you can represent your state. Do you know how to ratify, depolite, and promulgate in accordance to international law with the Secretary of the United Nations, according to Article one oh two? Do you know how to become a contracting state to your own dang own Moors treaties? Do you know how to become a party of contracting state to the United Nations Charter? Do you know how to become a contracting state to all the United Nations resolutions such as the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Genocide? You can't become a party to the prevention of genocide unless you're a state. And all this is with a pen. That's the war. The war's with a pen. The pen is mighty than a sword. It's not a physical battle. It's a mental battle of intellect. Chess is a game of intellect. It's standard operating procedures. It's the same rule of engagement. Your job is to engage to protect what? Your homeland. That's all it is. Moors gotta understand this. The game is right here, Moors. I cannot express this enough. This is the chess game right here. This is white, this is black pieces. Article one, white pieces. Article two, black pieces. And the black pieces are winning. White pieces suffer from what? Cottages of dissonance. And that's what's happening. And because we suffer from cottages of dissonance cause we don't know who we are, now we can be fooled by anybody cause we don't know who we are. We don't know if we're a cat or a dog or what? We don't know if the dog's supposed to say meow. So somebody say, yeah, all dogs go meow. You say, okay, that's what's up. Cause you in fellowship instead of scholarship. That's the game right here. Article one, white pieces. Article two, black pieces. It's a game of geopolitics, and it's not checkers. It certainly ain't tribal law. Where the heck does it say anything about tribal law in Article fifteen? This gotta stop. As I start to close out. Why did I pause right here so long? I cannot continue to read. I can't read twenty-six pages of this until you understand the origin of how the United States of America even has the power to enforce international law. I couldn't go no further until you understood how the United States has the power to enforce international law on behalf of, as a representative of the United States of America. Therefore, the instructions. They got a state, and then they establish what? An intergovernmental organization. Noble Droual Lee said, learn from the European. So what did the Moors do? The competent Moroccan Moors established a state and then established what? An intergovernmental organization, commonly known as the Wazir Regional Council. You see what's happening? We're mirror imaging them. We're beating them at this geopolitical game of chess. So this is about a declaration of intervention. We're gonna pick this up in Class one oh four. We got about, uh, about twenty-one more pages to go. We'll keep breaking it down. There's no use in just pronouncing words and don't know what the heck we're reading. Look how much time I spent on one paragraph. This is how Moors should have been studying. But instead, we run around here talking about the Pope. The Pope don't have nothing to do with your treaties. Their treaties are between who? The United States of America and Morocco. The bilateral treaty. Stop talking about the Pope. You wasting your time. It has nothing to do with no paper bulls. Who cares about doctrines of discovery? It's irrelevant. Focus on your treaty. What is the supreme law of the land? Treaties. Is a doctrine of discovery a treaty that's supreme law of the land? No, then why do you keep talking about it? I know why you keep talking about it, cause it's a feel-good. You see, let me point out something, that's I start to close out. Let me point out something. As I start to close out, as I start to close out, as I start to close out, what am I talking about when I say stop talking about the Pope and the paper bulls and the doctrine of discoveries? Waste of time, it's meaningless. Here's what I'm talking about. See, the Moors don't understand the art of geopolitical war. See, Moors don't understand strategy without tactics is the slowest route to victory. So what's happening? The Moors claim they got a strategy, but they ain't got no tactics. What is tactics? That's a call to action, that's putting it into action, right? That's creating what? The critical path to victory. What's the plan, right? What's the blueprint? Is it well-settled principle that other people have done before us? Africa decolonized. Why aren't we studying Africa and what they did with their strategy and their tactics? Why are we studying them? But instead, guess what Moors are doing with this paper bull and they're talking about the Pope and the doctrine of discovery? You know what that is? That's called tactics. Without strategy is noise before defeat. So Moors ain't got nothing but noise going on, and that's why you keep getting defeated. Cause you don't understand strategy and tactics. I end with that. Islam.
Islam.